Tissues.
Want my mask?
Huh?
Want my mask?
Nah. On the wild D P I M again, but it's called the meeting to order any items from the public? These motions approved the agenda.
Mr. President, if there's no changes or modifications to the agenda move except the agenda for Thursday, February the 11th.
Motion been made?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. We, any questions on the purchase order? Mr. Davis, you have five internal budget revisions?
Yes, sir, I have five internal budget revision requests for the council's consideration. All five are for Department 428 Information Technology and submitted by Gary Wine. The first request, Mr. Wine is requesting that he be allowed to reduce line 219 building equipment rental by $12,000. Current unencumbered fund balance is $92,173.15 with 47.32% spent to date. An increased line 222 dues and subscriptions by $12,000. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of $2,143.3 with 92.99% spent to date. The request is made to properly fund future dues and subscription expenses. The second request, Mr. Wine's requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 214 travel by $11,000. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of $15,000 with nothing spent to date. And again, increase dues and subscriptions line 222 by $11,000. The third request, Mr. Wine's requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 219 building equipment rental by $20,000. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of $92,173.15 and increased line 211 telephone by 20,000. That account currently has a deficit balance of $17,049.99. Next request, Mr. Wine's requesting that he be allowed to decrease lots of supplies and materials by $30,000, line 341. Unencumbered current unencumbered fund balance is $152,690.98 with 62.90% spent to date. An increased line 223 professional services by $30,000. That account currently has a deficit balance of $9,106.31. And finally, Mr. Wine has requested again that he be allowed to reduce line 341 supplies and materials by $40,000 and increase telephone by 40,000.
Have any questions for Mr. Davis?
Sorry, we have a change in status. We have a new hire recommendation received from Allen Davis County Administrator for April Holler as a grants coordinator with an annual salary of $35,000 effective February 16th, 2021.
How many applicants did you have?
Um, we had quite a few applicants, but only three that even warranted interviews. Um, and, and none of those were strong candidates, but this lady will, will work out well.
When'd she start?
Uh, February 16th.
New hire recommendation received from Jennifer Swisher, 911 Director for Brown Ona as a telecommunicator trainee with an annual salary of $36,645 effective February 22nd, 2021.
This candidate actually is relocating here and has all the certifications that we need, so he will only be an op or a telecommunicator trainee for a short period of time until he becomes familiar with the CAD system. Um, but he can pretty much, he does have to go through the whole orientation.
That's good.
So.
Where's he from?
Uh, Georgia or.
Oh, right.
Down, down south somewhere, yeah, he just relocated to this area.
New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for the following individuals Derrick Walker as deputy with an annual salary of $42,836 effective March 1st, 2021. Jacob Northcraft as a deputy with an annual salary of $41,475 effective April 1st, 2021. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Larry Hess Assessor for Dakota Stockton Meyer as a transfer clerk with an annual salary of $25,000 effective February 9th, 2021. Letter resignation received from the Animal Control for Ginger Serb Cyborg effective February 5th, 2021. Letter re- resignation received from the David Port Center for Matthew Parker effective March 26th, 2021. Any questions on the changes? Everyone, everyone was present for the meeting on January 20th, 28th, 2021 for the county council meeting and the board of review and equalization and corrections or changes on those. The county council calendars will be here this afternoon for 2 o'clock for board of review and equalization or the office will be closed on Monday. And Tuesday, we have a 2:00 PM for board of review and equalization, so. And then back in the chamber next Monday or next Thursday, uh, 9:30 AM and 2:00 PM for our last session of board of review and equalization. Questions on the.
The 2 o'clock PM meeting next Thursday will not, it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Unless something major walks through the door, you, you will be recommended on Tuesday the 16th before the review and equalization is signed.
Good, alright.
So we're hopeful that next Thursday afternoon meeting not be necessary.
Okay. Alright, Board and Commissions, we have Fire Board tonight here in the chambers at 6:30 PM. Tuesday, 9:00 AM, W R N R, I'll be on with Dave and Rob. 11:30 AM Parks Correct, 5:00 PM Sura District, 6:00 PM Stormwater District, 6:00 PM Planning Commission. Wednesday to 17th, the 4:00 PM, uh, Berkeley County Criminal Justice Board, 6:00 PM Solid Waste Authority, any additions to the boards and commissions? We have a bond reduction for Vista Development Court, uh, Court Hickory Run Phase A and B, Bacon Court for Executive Way, Engineering Department has made that recommendation. And also they have a bond release for Panhandle Builders and Escavators and Climbing Stations, Phase 3 locks 55 through 67, 84 through 99, 195 through 202, file number 2007-093. Um, and also known as 001-06A Department, uh, Engineering Department has made that recommendation. Questions for Dirk or anything? Thank you Dirk. Um, need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Um, nothing from the assessor?
He's back there.
Okay, you don't have anything for us this morning, right?
No, other than the new hire.
Yeah, we already did that. Alright, Board and Meeting reports, Mr. Barnhire?
Well, thank you, Mr. President, I always appreciate the motion to go over my board's meeting. I only had one, the Berkeley County Public Service Water District. Um, they bought a one-ton truck, F-55 Ford F-550 for $56,279.
It's more than one ton.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
Approval of pay application for to Cardinal Point for $119,000, which makes the total of $655,000. They approved the mainline extension agreement for Nate Bush Pines for 76 single-family homes and Cold Spring Run, but they didn't say what it was, how many houses it's for. And then they had the executive, uh, director's report and, uh, they are, uh, talking to Inwood Quarry as a possible water source. Of course, they've taken some samples and the water is equivalent to the Fever Spring for all practical matters.
And hard as nails.
Yeah, well, yeah, you dropped it.
Yeah. Don't know whether to drink it or chew it.
Yeah, and, uh, they're.
You saying there's a little bit of lime in that water?
Yeah, that's, well, the hardness was 320 to 420, alkalinity 200 plus.
So there's a little bit of water in that lime.
Yeah, and they're changing out all the meters in the woods. And that's pretty much it.
That'd be a pretty good job, pretty big job, changing all the meters.
Yeah, it's like 1,200 of them.
Yeah, it's crazy, there's a lot of homes back here.
That's gonna be costly.
Well, they got to, you, you just can't tell where the pressure problems are, where the service problems are unless they take it out over there.
So just wonder if they have to change the meter setters and everything or just the meters? That'd be a lot.
I hope it's just the meters.
Just the meters, right.
Yeah, I think they, they can get to all of them, you know, some of them were, I think, in pretty weird places.
Uh huh.
But.
Well, the one thing too about changing meters, if they go to the electronic ones, that's probably what they're.
Oh, yeah.
That's another time.
Yeah. Yeah. Instead of mainly reading all the meters.
Yeah, it's always trying.
That'll take one guy to drive by instead of three guys to drive and read.
Mr. Delie.
Um, I did have, I had, uh, a couple of Zoom meetings. I had one, uh, at my, uh, my first roundhouse meeting, but until next week, we've probably done it, put that on the agenda for next Wednesday. I had, uh, I had an airport authority meeting and I tried to know my new tablet and I actually got to, my phone was dead at the time, so I couldn't, um, so I couldn't get to anybody on there, but, um, but I watched the whole meeting, I just couldn't get the mute off. They, they actually called me up the next day and asked me if I was okay, because they said they couldn't remember a meeting where I didn't say anything.
They seen your lips move, but they didn't hear you.
No, we didn't even get to see that, just saw his name there, he was, he wasn't even video on us.
Yeah, they said, yeah, there's, there's a problem there, so, uh, Gary's gonna look at the tablet and try to get that, uh.
I had, I had the same problem when I see. They could see me, I could see them, but I couldn't speak to them.
That might have been by design.
Well, I think there's a button there for sure that I didn't.
That doesn't, that doesn't make me feel any better, Jim, that I'm as, I'm as, uh, as, uh, as inclined to be able to operate my tablet as you are. Anyway, regardless, uh, so I was there, but I didn't get to, didn't get, didn't get to comment on anything. Farm land protection, um, was a, was a learning experience, the, um, to find out just how the board operates and, and a little bit of background on thought process in there. Um, one thing they did do, um, they were putting together a, um, a plan for the future and one of the things they took out of the plan was, um, was there, there was a line item about, uh, about working, um, with property to make property accessible for Parks and Recs.
Oh, is that right?
And they took that out of the plan.
Took it out?
Yeah.
So it's there now? It's there now?
No, no, it was part of, it was part of their, um, part of their development where they were going ahead and trying to create a new plan and that was one of the topics and they voted to remove that. And the reason is they, they said it doesn't fit with the, um, with, um, the, how the board is made up to operate. It's not made up to, um, to do farming, uh, in parks, so it's, uh, legislation, I guess, federal legislation doesn't allow that, so they removed that. And, and their thought process was that it should be reserved for farming, not for, there, and I, I would say that board is pretty straight and narrow on, on farm ground protection is for farming. I, I had talked one time to ask and I didn't, I kind of got away from it, didn't get, uh, involved in the, in the conversation enough and I thought about, um, how they felt about agritourism, um, I, I didn't mention it one time, but, um, I'm, I'm gonna bring that back up because I would, I would think, I would think there would be support for that. Their agritourism, um, is a big moneymaker for farmers. I mean, if you think of, you know, if somebody's gonna put in a, a brewery, they need hops and why not grow hops locally? I mean, there is no hops grown as far as I know, it, it closes in Pennsylvania, they are down southern Virginia.
Unless you have an individual crop of your own.
Right, right, but, um, but, uh, to get somebody like one of the local farmers to grow some hops to, to do that, uh, you know, wheat barley for, you know, corn to make a distillery, you know, make moonshine or, and bourbon or whatever, you know, so, um, yeah, I think, uh, I think if, if legislation changes, um, this year for the alcohol, the old, um, alcohol laws that we have, I think you can see a lot of those things pop up because the, they'll be, the, the legislation I think they're talking about now could be a lot more friendly to, to those, I think, to agritourism. So I, I look forward to that conversation in the future. Let's see, what else did I have? Development Authority, we had a, the Development Authority meeting yesterday, I zoomed into that, we had, um, um, we have, I think she had three new prospects come in, um, three new prospects come in within, uh, within the last couple of days and, uh, and we approved, we approved, um, there's a piece of property that we own, um, down by the VA Center that we have an offer on that piece of property and it needs to be negotiated with the state because the state holds the title. We approved that to go, uh, go through if the negotiation could, um, could be met. And, uh, and we also voted on, um, on giving the Parks and Recs $25,000. They want to do, uh, do a study and, uh, there's a grant out there for $50,000 that is a 25% match, so they needed the money for the match, so we voted to, uh, voted, and in, and I will say, I, I don't, I don't know if I'm 100% on board with the, the study that they're doing, but I think it's great that they're doing, you know, that they're getting into that part of it and looking at, uh, looking at putting something together to creatively answer. So that's pretty much it.
Okay.
You ride over lane and the light.
Maybe it's just the board.
Yeah, well, could be.
Yes, sir, I had two meetings, first one was the Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority and discussing, um, the COVID issues that we're going through and, uh, the funding and ridership and, and all that, so they're still, just like everyone else, they're battling a little bit of a budget crunch. I just wanted to. Sorry, I can't.
Well, they're always going to battle a budget, I mean, all of them, because their public transportation is never going to pay for itself, I mean, it just doesn't anywhere that I've, I've ever known it.
No.
I mean, they're, they're always up against the battle.
Their, uh, well, their ridership, the on-demand response, um, van is, is very busy with, um, non-critical patient transportation, that's for sure, so they've been able to keep up with that. The, uh, I had also had Airport Authority meeting, as, uh, I did attend and watched in June from the, uh, board office and, uh, so, uh, they adopted the budget for next year. It is a, it's, it's quite a, quite a budget to, uh, to amass what, uh, what it used to be into what it is now, so. They, uh, they're on their way to be self-sustaining and, and looking forward to that, that end of time, but I think they're still gonna require a little bit of bridge money to, to make it, uh, sustainable for themselves, so.
They made great progress.
They have.
With the great money we gave them in the past.
Uh, there was a, a little incident out there last Friday, um, with a transient pilot and he is in critical condition still, so it was, uh, just a freak accident.
Which is good that he's still in critical condition, but, uh, last I heard they had him through their, uh, drug.
Just claim what they did, that was the last thing that I heard, so. But the family is, we trying to keep in touch with the family to, you know, to offer any assistance that we can, um, making sure that, you know, everything was secured and the plane was properly stored, the FAA was notified and, uh, reports were given, so.
You know, it, it, it's funny when you think of a couple of years ago, a couple of years ago, we, we thought, man, it would be nice to have that charter service, it'd be nice to have the hangers and then now you're, you know, you end up consuming a meeting about, hey, we got this thing we gotta take care of and this thing we gotta take care of, you know, I mean, that's.
Good problems.
That's progress, it's good problem, it's a good problem because you got problems that you're dealing with because you have those things now.
Yep, where you didn't have them before, I think it's the, I don't wanna, I think the problems we have now were afraid to be tackled before and now we have, you know, we had a good group and, uh, a good direction and I think it's, uh, it's welcome.
Alright, let's personally go there.
Yes, sir, I had Zoom meeting last night on the, uh, our training facility, uh, partnership with James Rumsey and, uh, still, still gathering partners, uh, for that, still looking at, grant opportunities that are available. Uh, we'll be pulling in different partners from EMS and law enforcement as well for their, um, for their needs and their buy-in, uh, and also their connections, uh, we're also working with the Development Authority, uh, to prepare a, um, a statement, basically, you know, Sam Meter with Rumsey is working very closely with Sandy Hamilton to help develop that, that mission statement, uh, direction, so. There's, uh, we have plans on going to Fairbanks to actually look at their burn center, which is 21 years old, it's, it's held up that well and the amount of burns that they do, uh, it must be, must have been corrected.
Was that self-constructed or was that a kit that they bought?
I think it was self-constructed.
Okay.
And a lot of times it'll use like this thing, they still play to them and that kind of stuff, so. If it's held up that well for them, it should last us a very long time.
I seen one, I seen one down in South Myrtle Beach where they had a, uh, a burn tower, right where you go back towards the airport down in, uh, South Myrtle and it's all made out of sea containers.
Well, uh, I, I envisioned that, that there will probably be some sea container, uh, attachments to this, but the burn, the actual burn unit, they, they want to be able to construct and then use the sea containers for different, uh, opportunities for training. It's, it's gone a long way, you know, it's.
It's been talked about for a long time.
Yeah, and it's, it's really needed, you know, we want to try to take a regional approach, you know, for the entire Panhandle, you know, reaching out as far as Minerald, then Tamsburg County and, you know, currently everybody's gotta go somewhere else to do their training, so I expect there, there are live burn training. So there's, there's a lot of opportunities that hopefully we can make this a very active, uh, training facility, not only for fire, but EMS and law enforcement as well.
Good. Don't have anything to report on, on any forward decisions at the time. Actually, the central dispatch could make that meeting at 2:00 on Tuesday because we didn't, this board of review, so, um, I understand, I mean, it's going well and, um, no concerns, as far as I know, of to report on other staffing. Uh, I would like for one of y'all to make a motion, I received, uh, in, on the Fire Board, a letter from Hedgesville, um, Chief Nichols, um, saying that the, uh, Board of the Fire Department, um, um, has, uh, made a recommendation to the Fire Association to remove Joey Kidwell from the Fire Board and, uh, based on, uh, attendance record, uh, and Joey basically said, because his work, uh, just couldn't, couldn't make it. He did talk to his employer and changed his work schedule and stuff like that. Maybe I should just talk about this right now and, uh, maybe I need to get back, um, and, um, we can act on it next week, but, um, and then the Fire Association also sounds like they're saying that they would, because he is a representative from the fire side of like having removed, um, so let me talk to them about that tonight, I've got a Fire Board meeting, we'll, we'll act on it next week if we need to, but, uh, there's.
Like change the schedule around to try to solve the problem and, yeah, now they want to remove?
Well, I think, I think what they, once they brought the, the detention, that was a, was a conflict, uh, or have, you know, that they were reviewing from attendance and, and, and from the attendance record, they would have, they had more concerns, um, but, um.
I mean, it doesn't make sense to have a member on there that's not participating.
But since then, he had to get back to his, actually, owner of the company and say, look, this is our agreement that I be there, it needs to be, he said, yes, I understand, I'm not sure you, you're able to make. Now, I think Joey's term expires in August if I'm not mistaken. And, and the other thing too is the, the Fire Department was supposed to give me three names and gave me one name. The chief understands I have to have three names, so time isn't an essence right now and I'd like to work through it a little bit more tonight and see where we're still standing right now, so, cause I, Joey does a good job. I think he's a better representative. Anything else? Alright, um. All right, um, next on our agenda is Deb. Any, any activity on appointments or anything on board commissioners? Next on our agenda is Deb Nichols from Burke County Emergency Ambulance Authority Exonerations for the month of November. Hundred thirty-eight.
These are explained sometimes.
Right.
There will be a late committee. Last year.
Grand total's what?
Includes the. Since this was prepared, the data, uh, fiction, uh, three properties that would probably have gone, like, so rapidly.
Excellent. How many total, Deb?
The grand total.
How many?
One point. Four and a half. And the grand total.
How much?
Eight thousand two hundred.
All right. The exonerate, or need a motion for the hundred thirteen exonerations total of eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Unless it's been made second. Any discussion? If not, all fair say aye. Uh, anyone opposed to motion, Garry? Thank you. Next on our agenda is a board and commission interview of Virginia Moody. Deb, see, okay, you're a candidate for the senior service board. Tell us a little bit about yourself, why you want to serve and how you think you can, uh, contribute to the senior service.
Um, so my name is Virginia. I'm forty years old. I'm a bank manager at C and B Bank in Hedgesville. And, uh, patrolling to the senior services. It's my whole life. That's something that my mom and dad have done with us either. When we were with church, we'd go visit places. Um, but also my dad is a veteran and I take him to his appointments. Uh, we go every year to the VA and visit and such things. And I do already do some volunteering with the, uh, for the senior services. I was actually there yesterday and took back, uh, some Valentine's cards for them to distribute to the seniors. And when I was talking with my mentor through the bank and we were talking about being involved in the community, they said, should do something you're passionate about. And, um, I am passionate about the seniors in our community.
Mark Carroll was very, uh, passionate about the community.
Yes, yes, sir.
He is. So, uh, Mr. Barnhart.
Thank you. Do you have any programs you'd like to emphasize or anything?
Um, I, I, I am new to this, so I would admit I, you know, have a lot of learning to do, but I was out yesterday. I almost, uh, with Amy Orndorff and walked around and viewed everything. Um, at the moment, I don't have an answer to that because I, I'm just learning how things would work through that. Um, but I did let her know that I definitely need someone who is an active person in U D's and volunteering and things like that, so.
What's your skill set? I mean, financials?
Well, to be honest with you, um, I start, I have my, uh, paralegal bachelor's degree. I used to work for William O'Brien here in town, if anybody remembers. Yeah, before he retired, I worked for him for multiple years. And then when he, um, ultimately retired, um, I went to the bank, which sounds kind of odd. But believe me, you're still dealing with the law when you're working with, with, uh, accounts and what you can do with loans and things like that.
Is Rob doing that?
He's just retired and enjoying his brand name.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Delia.
Well, Jim asked one of the questions I was, I was thinking, you know, what, uh, what, what, what brings you, what, what makes you think that you're going to be an asset? You know, what qualifications you have that you're going to bring to the senior services? And, and I am the liaison on that, um, but I haven't even been to a meeting yet, which I'm, I, I'm very familiar with Amy and dealing with Amy. But, uh, um, I did actually go out there the other day to have a conversation with myself, but, um, yeah, so, so, uh, what, you know, what, other than, you know, being passionate about the seniors? What, what have you, have you been interacting out there before or?
Recently, not, not in, not a lot in the past, but recently. COVID has kind of put, uh, a hindrance on a lot of that, understandably. They're not open, so you can't go out. Um, but I do intend to be active and I don't just say that I am just that person that I, you know, uh, with meetings and things, I don't just sit and listen to other people talk. I do like to be involved, to discuss things, to give them my ideas and take their ideas, and I do like to.
When did it meet then?
Yeah, I forget. I don't remember. I have, was that my?
I'm looking at the, this calendar now. Oh, there it is. They meet on Wednesdays at three o'clock, which is the fourth Wednesday of every month.
Yes.
Appears to me at three P M. At the senior service working at the, is that going to be a problem?
No.
Mr. Wicker?
I forgot that one. That was Elaine's question.
Yeah, you're slipping a little bit.
You, usually my, uh, I don't have any questions, but it just more than, and just thanking you for wanting to give back to your community. And that's where it all kind of got started with me, not so much at the senior center, but being a volunteer on some boards and, uh, that happened quite a while ago.
You just keep coming back for more and more, don't you?
Yeah, pays good. As a volunteer. Usually I get voluntold anymore, but my volunteering.
That's how that works.
Yeah. And it's good. So again, thank you for coming in and wanting to be part of our communities.
Thank you.
Mr. Gukunare. Yes, sir. I'd, I'd also like to say thank you for applying. You know, it's, uh, it's critical, uh, that we take care of our senior citizens, uh, without a doubt. I think, yes. Jim, you'll, you'll get on first name basis with Jim. But, uh, you know, I think with your skill set, uh, and, and your professional, uh, background, I think, I think you'd be, uh, a real good fit with them. And to, because a lot of times they do have legal problems or, or things they don't understand that you would maybe be able to help them with. So thank you for applying.
I will say when I was out yesterday, um, one of them did tell me that I'm awfully young for the senior citizens board. So that actually was extremely flattering to me.
I think, um, everyone has made it very clear that the seniors are someone that, that made us who we are today. And, and we take great pride in trying to assist them in any way that we possibly can, actually in building ones as well. Uh, right now, Virginia, I don't have any questions. Um, it sounds like the passion is there. Just, um, you know, young, uh, and you, and, you know, you, you, we all got to start somewhere. Right? So, um, thank you for applying.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Tell Mark we appreciate him giving his employees the opportunity to serve the community.
Oh, yes, sir. That, we're, we're definitely a community bank. I always say that, but, uh, when they say Y C and B, that's always my answer because we are involved in the community.
That is, exactly right. Yeah, especially in today's world.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say that I thought maybe I was first, but the last time I was here, the power went out. And this time it called for snow. And I said, if it was canceled today and I came back next time and there was a fire or something, I would say, I don't know.
Be safe.
Do you know, do you know, I went out there the other day to talk with Amy and just to get a feel for what's going on out there. Do you know that they, they do, um, they have eighty, um, eighty seniors that they do in-home care for?
Is that right?
Eighty seniors and they have forty-seven employees that do that in-home care for those eighty people. You know what's even crazier? You're removing nine hours now.
So it's more of a volunteer?
Nine hours now. They've got a bunch of seniors that can only get, you know, they can only work three hours. But they've, they've, um, and I'll probably, probably have that conversation. They just got a, a mandate that they have to have another position to, in that group to, um, to oversee the process of these people going in and out of the house at all times. And, I mean, they do, they go and give them baths and, you know, help them with general chores around the house that they can't do. I mean, that kind of stuff. But, uh, I didn't know they did that much of it. I mean, I, I knew they did a little bit of it, but I didn't know it was that big of a part of their budget. Just goes for that and that they have a, an Alzheimer's program that they do with. It was, it was pretty enlightening to sit with her and, and have conversations, but, um, you know, and after looking at it, it's, it's probably, you know, looking at her whole budget and talking to her, it's, it's, it's real similar to the, the transit authority. That's never going to pay for itself, right? Because the scene, the, the amount of seniors that they, um, they take care of, have no income. I mean, they, they're on fixed income where they can't even afford, I mean, they're bringing them meals because.
Two dollars up a meal.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's crazy. It's crazy what they do and the amount of volunteers that are.
You're, you're what?
Meals on wheels.
Well, she had meals. Yeah, but I mean, to, to think of how many, how many meals they give, it's crazy how many they do. I mean, crazy, the amount of, of meals that they're delivering and, and going and taking care of in-home care. I was, I knew that that was happening, but I, I didn't know the magnitude of it was that large, you know?
It's just another part of, uh, improving quality of life.
But think about, think about, I mean, they were talking fifteen dollars a, uh, uh, mid, raising minimum wage to fifteen dollars. That would, I mean, that would put that program up. I mean, how could you do that? Forty-seven people making nine dollars. Well, they're not all making money. But I think even some of the ones that are in charge there are only making twelve, thirteen dollars now.
Well, it's a passion. And we have so many people that do it. It's just like you heard Virginia say earlier, you know, it's a passion.
She said, she said they had to have somebody to oversee. Um, they got to find somebody and of course they got to find the money to get somebody to oversee, um, what's going on for like fifteen, eighteen hours a week. And I said, how much money are you talking about? She said, it. She said, it's going to cost about twelve thousand five hundred a year to hire somebody. I'm like, really? Twenty-five thousand dollars for two year, for two years to do it. I was shocked.
All right, um. Okay.
Okay.
Um, so. All right, so next on our agenda is Virginia Sign, uh, Circuit Clerk, uh, Budget Presentation for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two.
Um, if I may, the council, you have twenty-one budgets being presented to you today. In, in your packet, um, you'll see the request. Um, you'll also see your fiscal twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two budget analysis, which represents the first six months of the current fiscal year. But we did get updated control reports yesterday morning. So you'll see, uh, laying in front of you, the expenditure control reports, which actually represents seven months, um, which is about fifty-eight point three-three percent. It's important that you have this information because it also reflects the two million dollar state budget revision that you approved, um, a couple of weeks ago. So this, your, the, the control report that's in front of you is the most up-to-date and accurate expenditure report that you have. So you may want to refer to that.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Virginia.
Right? All right. Virginia, it's always a pleasure to see you. Um, where do you want to start?
Well, I'm just going to ask for the same thing I asked for last year.
Okay.
Thousand dollars.
Okay. All right. All right, I'm sorry.
Doesn't matter if they think they're proud of the fact that they're here.
You still sit on the association as a, as a, uh, officer?
Yes.
Yeah, that's been longstanding? All right, tell. Hi. Do not. I've never really done on this, the, uh, that association. I've never, I've only went to twenty-one for one meeting and then there's. I should go. I mean, it's just. Oh, I know. It's just, it's just, uh, a lot of those meetings are, when we're setting our budget, they're very difficult. But anyway, okay, so anybody have any questions on a request on a budget?
We've got twenty-two full-time employees plus three vacancies.
Well, I've got two vacancies and I'm interviewing now. They just were tested.
All right, anything else? Tell us about your scanning project.
Scanning project? Well, each case needs to be verified because the company we had skipped a lot of the paperwork. So they're being, I have a group that is verifying what needs to be re-scanned or re-scanning. Their, uh, the social security numbers out and that has to be re-scanned. And then I have a group that was just.
And that's still being, that's being done in two different locations still, right?
All in the office.
All in the office.
That back sheet is obviously going to. It's still processed.
How many cases are you doing per year about? And does it take a special employee to do that? Does it take a, a, can't be a, a new employee doing what you're doing, right?
Where they're being trained. I have a training round.
Okay. Is about how many cases are you getting a year? Do you have any idea?
It looks like so far they did about twenty thousand.
How many?
About twenty thousand.
What says total cases, uh, completed is nine thousand eight hundred seventy-four. Okay, all right. So it's on twenty thousand cases a year?
I don't know how far this move is about to go. This is a year, is it four? It could be about two.
Could you give me the information on how many cases they're doing, you know, like, um, the last couple of years, three years, how many cases are getting done per year? So the one, the back sheet is just on the cases that have been destroyed. Is that what you're saying? The twenty-two thousand four hundred?
The back sheet is the old, like eighteen hundred cases.
Okay. Oh, I see. Eighteen eighty-six.
If you look at the other sheets, it tells you the cases that have been destroyed.
Destroyed is the, there's the red or pinky swans.
If you follow it. This is scanned.
Right, I see that.
And see the D is destroyed.
Right, right, right.
And some, and there's a lot we have to keep with this, where anything that falls, they don't.
All right. Do you have a, do you have an expected completion win? No idea.
That.
We tried to play that game before, right?
No, I mean.
Building over there is still full boxes.
How many man-hours does it take to, I mean, if you know how many, about how many man-hours it takes to do, um, you know, ten cases or whatever, can't you estimate by how many cases you have left?
That could be one of the ones of those cases we have to keep.
I guess the other thing too, I mean, it gives you a flimary number, but you don't know how big a file could be too, right?
It could be a box, there's two boxes.
But actually the ones that would give back to the back of the report, and I think if the report is, is the ones that seems like. But actually, the ones that we give back to the back of the report, and I think if the report is is the ones that seems like they're getting more and more about the newer cases, I should say.
Let's start in twenty seventeen.
You scan them as you're done, right? So one, okay. All right. Anybody have any questions for Virginia there?
I just think by looking through the activity, I think it's safe to say that you've got obviously one of the very busiest circuits in the in the state.
They're busy.
I know you're.
Second circuit, that's second business in the state, but some people claim that you're the business. Because the way because the ways people break their cases down, right?
Yeah.
All right, Virginia, it's always good to see you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's take a break.
We're back in session. Next on our agenda is Gary Wine, Deputy County Administrator, Bid Recommendation, RFP for Emergency Vehicle Outfitting Equipment. Good morning, sir.
And Mr. President.
We're worried about that later.
So, we have reviewed the four budgets, sir, excuse me.
She did that on purpose.
The four bids submitted and all of your eyes that looked at me when the first one, of course, we opened the first one at 191 and everybody was like, wow, and they started coming in at 320, 322, and 296. So, they've all been reviewed. It isn't that the lower pricing was deeper discount. There were some items that they don't distribute that they didn't include. However, I went ahead and compared their prices on their existing to what was given, and they were still not below those even on those small pieces. So, the lowest, most responsible bidder that met specs his priority installs, I gave it to them. If you remember, the 14, 2018 explorers, they actually won the contract to completely outfit those. They did a great job, even though this is just for equipment. It is our recommendation if the council agrees to award the materials for the outfitting to them. As part of this, if you recall, we're in-house, we're going to outfit those ourselves, which will get them a fleet budget after bid.
I see that score.
I'm sure you did. There are, there are some other items that were not included in the bid. It was intentional. One of them is decal. Obviously, we can't do that ourselves. We can address that with another bid as time moves forward.
Decaling, you said?
Decaling.
Oh, you got, you got, oh, I can't make them later.
Not if you want them to be like that, right? So, there's a local vendor.
Keegan takes that right out.
There's a local vendor in Martinsburg that does a great job. We've used them on one-offs. Obviously, at 30, we would have to bid. We know that the ballpark on that's about $1,000 a car. When we go to 130.
Does that include the ghosting?
There is no ghosting in any of these.
Oh, is that right?
No, sir.
I thought they said they won the ghost.
Not that, we haven't had that request. The, the animals, you know, the canine vehicles, they don't, they don't strike those at all. Those are, they live, just not as strong. But, there's two other items included in there. One of the first ones is radars. We have never, you have never been requested, Sheriff, on it as, they want to do radars on these. They intend to be on the roads, they intend to service, they intend to run radars. So.
They're already doing it.
I know. Well, they're about to do the 30 brand new ones if you so choose. The equipment that they have, we can't migrate from the stuff that they've got, it hasn't been serviced. You would not need to put it in 30 brand new cruisers. So, that, and then the last one-off item, you'll see a device down there called a 794 em emitter. That's to turn the red lights, red, green lights red on approach. There's some conversation when you do that in the awful world, although even.
Traffic lights?
Traffic lights, yes, sir. It will turn a green traffic light red on approach at a certain distance. All the front trucks have them.
It turns green ones to red or red ones to green?
Right. We hope it turns red all the time with them. But, those are additions that we haven't done. So, all of that said, the total request is 4678529. In my opinion, it really puts your cruisers where they should have been or should be. The new sheriff is excited to have all of those features. We planned on everything minus the 794Ms. That was a request that we hadn't even considered. The radars are direct by from the radar manufacturer. There's no bid process there. The emitters are direct by, and really, the only other thing are the decals that we can deal with that earlier. So.
Including decals as to 467 because it would be a separate bid.
Yeah, other than that, we would have to bid the decals on part. So, there's no rushing. Tracy just issued, I think we're looking at first of June for delivery of vehicles. We start outfitting, we can probably, we intend to do in the beginning, maybe one about every seven days. So, once we have that bid out, then awarded by John.
Just so you understand, if you approve this today, you've already approved 30 board interceptors, police interceptors to the tune of $969,750. If you approve the outfitting, which is not going to do us any good to have police interceptors if we don't outfit them, the total cost of those four vehicles will be $1,435,535, which actually will be discussed in your 960 capital vehicles.
I see that one too.
Budget for next year. We've already been in contact with the bank. We have interest rates, we have payments, we have all of that. So.
And, and so, you know, and that's, that's the thing that people don't understand. This sheriff does, that, you know, along with your requests of the initial person and the insurance that we pay on those is $970 something per vehicle, and also the outfitting and purchase of the vehicles, which is going to cost us another $250 something thousand, if I remember correctly, per year for the next five years. That's all to make our sheriff's department very functional. And, and I know, I know the sheriff appreciates it.
And, you know, I don't want to speak for the sheriff, but I did take this memo to him and reviewed with him to make sure that I was on the same page as him, because in this instance, I served you fiscally and him functionally to make sure those things do what he wants. And, I got a handshake and a thank you. So, hopefully he's watching and hopefully the council sees fit and move it forward and give them, it'd actually be at least 30 and the two canines from possession now. So, probably in the next 12 months, they'll have a 32 brand new cars in their field. Would you stay here?
Gary, what's the approximate cost savings with doing a lot of this in-house?
So, there's two pieces to that, Mr. Governor. It is the discount on the product that we're buying. So, we're buying, we spread this out, so we aren't dealing with markup for one particular vendor. We have seen on paper $1,500 per car for an install. But, that's wrapped in a bid. You can do the math. I mean, an installer on the street with margin, they're probably going to be trying to get somewhere in the $40 an hour mark installed. You'd be well below that. But, I can speak honestly to the last 14 we did, the install price was 1,500.
And I know from the past that you were very pleased with priorities, materials and products that you had, that they had actually installed themselves. But, but you were very pleased with the material that.
Hundred thousand percent. No question. And we were specific when we bid this. This is all human product for the most part. That's what the sheriff's department wants. There's some other distributors out there you can mod. This is just what they're used to use in matches their fleet. Know and understand, this installation is to the next level of technology. We have never, ever gone that. These cruisers will be the single most sophisticated K-1 cruisers you've ever had. They, it's called we can X technology. The control's actually plugged into the V2 port of the car, so we can make things happen when the door opens. We can make things happen on the flashers. They can turn their lights on with the remote go-on to the pump. So, this steps to a whole new level. Historically, we would never have done it home, because the support model, after you're done, all of that's something else. It did make sense. So.
Gary and I and Chief Wilson of Council recall years ago, went down to Priority Install, visited their facility in Montgomery County. And, they, just as an example, they have this sole source outfitting contract for police fire and EMS for Anne and Rundle County. It's quite, it's, it's, it's quite a, a process that they go through. And, to the, to the point where they made, they had their, their own cabling, wiring for the vehicles manufactured, so it actually has their, their logo on it, so that when you look at an installation that they've done, you know, you know, who did the installation. It's, it's quite a, it's quite a system, quite a company.
So, so are you, are you getting these, are you getting this equipment at a lower rate than when they, when they budget you, the install and everything together?
I believe the numbers speak to yes.
Right. I, I would think it would.
We're landing, we're landing this right around 11.6, the, the base configuration, which is comparable to what we did before. And we're stepping up to a whole other level of equipment.
Well, and that's, that's my next question. So, so, when we talked about this initially, obviously, there was another sheriff, and at that time, were, were we planning on these emitters and this radar equipment then? So, so this is another 110,000, 110,500, whatever. So, so we're, these, these vehicles are technically costing us, what, 3, 5,000 more?
That's exactly correct. Just around $3,700 or more, to a whole new level. So, it provides the public a whole new level of effort. Never, didn't do that. The sheriff has a different direction.
And, and I don't say that I disagree with it. But, but does do, where does all this, the money go for ticketing? I mean, is there any of that that actually stays local? I mean, obviously, the better job they do at enforcement of traffic laws, that type of thing, I, I, one would hope that it saves lives by doing that. And, and, you know, saves having accidents, all of that. But, is there any, is there any monetary gain for the county?
It's my understanding that it all goes to the state.
Right.
There's a few things that go here.
That, that has a fine picture.
Yeah, let me, let me look it on.
Doesn't have his name on it.
Yeah, I thought it was like a $5 fee or something. Yeah, something minimal. But, but so, once again, we're doing a better job to support the rest of the state.
Yeah.
And we're spending more money to do it.
Right. Some of it goes to magistrate court fund, community correction fund, courthouse.
Decal.
Oh, you can buy, you can, oh, I can't make them later.
If you want them to be like that, right? Um, so there's a local vendor.
He got takes out right out.
There's a local vendor in Martinsburg that does a great job. We've used them on one offs. Obviously, at thirty, we would have to bid. We know that the ballpark on that's about a thousand dollars a car. When we go through them at thirty.
Does that include the ghosting?
There, there is no ghosting in any of these.
Oh, is that right?
No, sir.
I thought they said they wanted the ghost.
Not that we haven't had that request. The, the, um, animals, you know, the canine vehicles, they don't be black, they don't strike those at all. Most certainly, they live just not as well. Um, but there, there's two other items, uh, included in there. One of the first ones is, is radars. We have never, you have never been requested, and we should upon it as, they want to do radars on these. They intend to be on the roads, they intend to service, and they intend to run radars, so.
They're already doing.
I know, well, they're about to do the thirty brand new ones if you so choose. Um, the equipment that they have, we can't migrate from this stuff that they've got, it's hasn't been serviced. And you would not need to put it in thirty brand new cruisers. So, uh, that, and then the last one off item, you'll see a device down there called a seven nine four M emitter. It's to turn the red lights, red, green lights red on approach. There's some conversation, uh, when you do that in, in the awful world, although even.
Traffic lights?
Traffic lights, yes, or it will turn a green traffic light red on approach at a certain distance. All the fire trucks have them, uh, these two.
It turns green ones to red or red ones to green?
Right, we hope it turns red all the time with them. Uh, but those are additions that we haven't done. Um, so, all of that said, the, the total request is four sixty seven eighty five twenty nine. Um, in my opinion, it really puts your cruisers where they should have been or should be. Um, the new sheriff is excited to have all of those features. Um, we planned on everything minus the seven ninety four M's, uh, that was a request that we hadn't even considered. Um, the, the radars are direct by from the radar manufacturer, there's no bid process there. The emitters are direct by, and really, the only other thing are the decals that we can deal with that earlier day, so.
Uh, excluding decals as to four hundred and sixty, could it be a separate bid?
Yeah, other than that, we would have to bid the decals on part, so there's no rushing. Tracy just issued, I think we're looking at first of June for delivery of vehicles. We start outfitting, we can probably, we intend to do in the beginning maybe one about every seven days, so. Once we have that bid out, then we're awarded by John.
And just so you understand, if you approve this today, you've already approved thirty board interceptors, police interceptors to the tune of nine hundred and sixty nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. If you approve the outfitting, which it's not gonna do us any good to have police interceptors if we don't outfit them. The total cost of those four vehicles will be one million, four hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and thirty five dollars, which actually will be discussed in your nine sixty capital vehicles.
I've seen that one too.
Budget for next year. We've already been in contact with the bank, we have interest rates, we have payments, we have all of that, so.
And, and so, you know, and that's, that's the thing that people don't understand. This sheriff does, that, you know, along with your requests of the additional person, uh, and, and the insurance that we pay on, which is nine hundred and seventy some dollars per vehicle, and also the outfitting and purchase of the vehicles, which is going to cost us another two hundred and fifty some thousand dollars, if I remember serving correctly, per year for the next five years. That's all to make our sheriff's department very functional. And, and I know, I know the sheriff appreciates it.
He, he, and, you know, I don't wanna speak for the sheriff, but I, I did take this memo to him and repute with him to make sure that I was on the same page as him, because in this instance, I served you fiscally and him functionally, to make sure those things do what he wants. Uh, and I got a handshake and a thank you, so, uh, hopefully he's watching and hopefully we cancel. See fit and move forward and give them, it'll actually be these thirty and the two canines from possession of, so probably in the next both months, they'll have a thirty two brand new cars in their field. What's the need?
Gary, what's the approximate cost savings with doing a lot of this work in-house?
So, there's two pieces to that, Mr. Governor, it is the discount on the product that we're buying. So, we're buying, we spread this out, so we aren't dealing with markup for one particular vendor. We have seen on paper fifteen hundred dollars per car for install. But that's wrapped in a bid. You can do the math, I mean, an installer on the street with margin, they're probably gonna be trying to get somewhere in the forty dollar an hour mark installed. You'd be well below that. But I can speak honestly to the last fourteen we did, that the install price was fifteen hundred.
And I know from the past that you were very pleased with priorities, uh, materials and products that you had, that they had actually installed themselves.
In fact.
But, but you were very pleased with the material that.
Hundred thousand percent, no question. And we were specific when we bid this. This is all human product for the most part, uh, that's what the sheriff's department wants. Uh, there's some other distributors out there who can ride, uh, this is just what they're used to using, it matches their fleet. Know and understand, this installation is to the next level of technology. We have never, ever gone that. These cruisers will be the single most sophisticated K nine cruisers you've ever had. They, but it's called we can X technology, the, the control is actually plugged into the E D two port of the car. So, we can make things happen when the door open, we can make things happen on the flashers, they can turn their lights on with the remote go on to the pump, so. This steps to a whole new level. Historically, we would never have done it on video as a support model after you're done. All of that's something else that did make sense, so.
Gary and I and Chief Wilson of Council Board called years ago, went down to prior install, visited their facility in Montgomery County. Um, and they, just as an example, they have this sole source outfitting contract for police fire and EMS for Anne and Rondo County. Um, it's quite, it's, it's, it's quite a, a, a process that they go through. And, um, to the, to the point where they made, they had their, their own cabling, wiring for the vehicles, uh, manufactured, so it actually has their, their logo on it. So that when you look at a, an installation that they've done, you, you know, who did the installation, it's, it's quite a, it's, it's quite a system, quite a company.
So, so are you, are you getting these, uh, are you getting this, uh, equipment at a lower rate than when they, um, when they budget you the install and everything together?
I believe the numbers speak to yes.
Right, I, I would think it would.
We, we're landing, we're landing this right around eleven six, the, the base configuration, which is comparable to what we did before. And we're stepping up to a whole nother level of equipment.
Well, and that's, that's my next question, so, so, um, when we talked about this initially, obviously, there was another sheriff, and at that time, were, were we planning on these emitters and this, uh, radar equipment then? So, so this is another hundred ten thousand, hundred ten five, whatever. Um, so, so we're, these, these vehicles are technically costing us, what, three, five thousand more?
That's exactly correct, just around thirty seven hundred dollars more. To a whole new level, so it provides the public a whole new level of effort, right? Never, didn't do that, the sheriff has a different direction.
And, and, and I don't say and I disagree with it, but, um, but does do, where does all this, the money go for ticketing? I mean, is there any of that that actually stays local? I mean, obviously, the better job they do at enforcing the traffic laws, that type of thing, I, I, one would hope that it saves lives by doing that. Um, and, and, you know, saves, uh, having accidents, all of that. But, uh, is there any, uh, is there any monetary gain for the county?
It's my understanding that it all goes to the state.
Right. There's a few things that go here.
That, that has a fine picture.
Yeah, let me, let me look it on.
Doesn't have his name on it.
Yeah, I thought it was like a five dollar fee or something, that was, yeah, something minimal, but, um, but so, once again, we're doing a better job to support the rest of the state. Yeah, yeah. And we're spending more money to do it. Right, it goes, there's the magistrate court fund, community correction fund, uh, courthouse, uh, court security fund, which we can see some of that money back in grants, criminal victims, there are all kinds of stuff.
But then, that's all state level funding, that if we want any of it, we have to apply for that distribution, it's.
Right.
So.
But team court, that's the new one that it's got, so on a ticket, team court gets.
How many days are you in jail are included in your bill?
One day, whether you spend time there or not, but team court gets five dollars, it looks like, depending on whether the crease is right or not. Yeah, but it's, it's, I mean, on a, on a hundred and eighty dollar ticket, or two, three hundred and sixty dollar ticket, get ten dollars. Food of people. But, but the thing, thing is, it's sort of like, a, a lot of people have spoken to us, each, each and every one of us says that they, they find it would be safer on eighty one already. You know, because of the police presence out there.
And, and there are some savings if, if more of a, a police presence on eighty one reduces the number of accidents, particularly serious accidents. It, it certainly impacts fire and EMS, because now we're not running hazmat or fire or ambulance. So, there are some indirect, um, benefits to, to the county.
I think Dan's not saying that, I, I'm. I'm not saying that it's not a benefit to us, I'm just pointing out the clear facts that, that, that it's a huge benefit to the state of West Virginia on what, what this sheriff is doing and what we're doing by spending another hundred and ten thousand dollars, you know? It, it, when, when, you know, when we argue the point to the state, you know, help us out, help us out, well, this is clearly the opposite direction, we're trying to help out the rest of the state by what we're doing here. Not only helping ourselves, but we're helping the state out as well.
Yeah.
And I, I just wanted to make it a point to mention that better. I guess, you know, hopefully one of the things that, well, that the sheriff's department once said that he'll see and has seen is, is being able to seize property.
I mean, you're seeing, you're seeing that right?
I know, so I said, yeah, so, that will allow that good between him and the prosecutors.
Right, and as you remember, I mean, we have two brand new canine vehicles that were bought from that money.
Right. All right, anybody have any more questions for Mr. Wine? entertain a motion for the bid recommendation.
Mr. President, I moved the accepted bid house recommendation by, uh, Deputy Town Administrator Wine.
All right. Motion to debate second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries, I thought we fell asleep there for a second.
Yeah, thank you. All right, now, Mr. Mr. Wine, if you would do the honors of, of your budget presentation of two thousand twenty one, twenty two? Uh, we do, sir. So, my first one, I don't know where they are, I'm going to go with nature is, we'll do I T first. Um, you'll notice, uh, that I have asked for more, uh, in many instances. I tried really hard and have gotten myself to the point here where I'm playing catch up to last year, particularly in line items like teleph- telephone, uh, maintenance and repair, uh, so I'll touch on them briefly. Um, telephone, we've added vehicles, we've added people, all of that adds to, I know, I'm sure you've got numbers, uh, I'm prepared. Uh, so, on it, some of that gets reimbursed, some doesn't. Uh, we've added the health department and their team on plan, and, and we get reimbursed for that. The D R C, uh, their team heavy on the collecting side and the vehicle side, you wanna know, they report, uh, home confinement, uh, even N I T in general. Uh, so every time we add staff, it ends up in a car with a phone, it ends up in there, so. The vehicles have monitoring devices in them, they have a telephone, have cellular in them, they have routers that make the mobile data computers and stuff, talk to ninety one in them, so. In every policeman, every fire truck, every ambulance, they've got two cell phones, and they can't be shared in the police, they can't operate without that. Uh, we build out all those departments directly under the umbrella of the council. Uh, but that, that line item is struggling. Um, we'll talk about my revenues that I've generated, a video of what I've been doing is augmenting that, the revenues that I generate to keep it afloat. Um, the maintenance and repair, going from one sixty five to two fifty, uh, we've upgraded new financial software. Uh, we've upgraded painting and engineering software, uh, we've upgraded some storage stuff. All of those come with year two maintenance, that will come in play in this next budget cycle. News and subscriptions are again a service that we run with, uh, on our V P N software, our V P N fleet is run, that's the virtual private network that we have, built connectivity back to us when we're out, the demand for it has grown, um. And then, the last thing at the bottom is some capital outlay, but we've got another couple of devices that need upgrading this coming year, the forty thousands to cover those on the data center side that are heavier ticket items than we're used to just picking up on the, on the materials and supplies. So, ultimately, there is additional requests, all of them supported by expenses that we either got approved or incurred in this current fiscal that are beginning to remain, is heading the next fiscal.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Wine?
I think I've got on your, uh, capital outlay, uh, request, and see if you can, there are particular about, uh, updating your drums.
For the forty, yes, not necessarily in there yet, but in the materials and supplies, we are gonna upgrade the drum, we're wearing that thing out. I actually offered this one to law enforcement, the sheriff has a new A S team, uh, the drum's dated by about four years. Uh, they're willing to have a certified, they've been, we follow them around and help them. Uh, we told them, we just pass it across and upgrade new, and Randy, as you well know, is certified himself, and he's talked about maybe adding one. Would you share with him, what he'd need for he and us, we ran into issue sharing. Yeah, some of the new infrared cameras that come with those now make it really nice, zip it in on the enforcement side. Uh, we've got a lot of details on that side of the coin. We've done some fire stuff too later on. Uh, fire scene footage from a couple hundred feet near is really advantageous when they're hitting him, so. Working pretty hard, and it's, it's a D G I Pro four, so it's probably, I think it's about four years old.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just know, you know, in the past experiences that I've had working with you all with that bid, you had mentioned, you know, we, we need a little bit better one.
Yeah, uh, we, we kind of waited on the industry to come up. Sometimes the little steps, the industry advances there, but they'd have a couple of big steps here in this current year. Um, remember, you will live, in fact, you have executed to the forty here in Martinsburg, you're looking for a person, so. That thing is paid dividends every year.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns with Mr. Wine? I'm glad you already defended yourself on quadrupling the budget since two thousand and eleven.
That's really nice.
But, uh.
Two quadrupled, I worked with you.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just, I told Mr. Davis, I was gonna have fun with you.
Hopefully, workload was a little more than five, two down, right?
It was.
Yeah, yeah, you, your department do a wonderful job, Mr. Uh, Wine, and, um, like you said, that, you know, a lot of it's been, um, inherited, you know, you inherited a lot of the copiers.
We did.
All the, anything that pertains to I T on upgrade and everything, it used to be in each department, now it's all under your department.
It's, so, we've worked really hard. Uh, before we stepped away from I T, included in the, I submitted to you our revenues generated for the year. If you saw that, we generated two hundred and sixty one thousand dollars in revenue, um, just in twelve months.
Yeah, well, the, the one thing, the one thing we always said, you know, when your staff are growing, um, and we're helping outside agencies and helping the city of Martinsburg, you know, uh, we, we've got to create the revenue to justify the position when we've done that.
We had, and, in the real world, you know, a board of directors could look at me and say, well, you know, you asked for this, we'll just deduct two hundred and sixty one from what you're asking for extra, and run the line. Um, we can do that, that's what we've been doing, we bring them in and we augment the budget and, and try and get in. I don't want to tell you, and you see the budget business, when it hits April, May, and June, we're moving money every week, trying to keep the things floating, waiting on stuff to come in. Um, that money has been really nice, it has helped with new equipment, it has helped to be able to say, yes, we can do that for you, nine hundred and forty, yes, we can do that for you, Sheriff. So, we use that that way, uh, and we'll continue, but it's, we've got relationships with all the outside agencies, some big, some small, so, um, we just build the solid waste authority for the first time in the last fourteen years, where they went over the five, the five hours in kind. So, Mr. Hugman sent me an email enough, when I sent enough of those, not gonna take long to get a response. And his quote was, what are you billing us in? I said, well, we've always billed you, we just, we never got past the first five hours. I got a, a very nice paragraph and a half that they appreciate everything that the council does, and they appreciate I T team for helping him. Uh, one of the things that is not reflected when you talk about the evidence generated is what you allow us to income, right? So, you could take the five hours times every outside agency and do the multiply, but you also, also income internet and telephone service to practically every outside agency here. You take that to the street at a minimum, talk three hundred dollars a month, some, I don't remember, we started working with the transit authorities six years ago.
Yeah, they were one of the first ones.
They were upwards of six hundred dollars a month.
That'd be more my personal business than three hundred dollar one.
Correct, so, when you talk about a developmental, a solid waste authority, all of those people, the solid waste authority is funding internet at the, an indoor, whatever it's called, in the middle of that bottom, or it's barely electric.
It was recycling? Wood recycling?
Mm-hmm. Uh, recycling center on Grapevine, to the landmarks, to the historical society, uh, to farmland preservation, everywhere in between. There isn't any way any of those could pull that off for us, probably a hundred and fifty a month, I think, retail is probably closer to three hundred, some of them, as I said, were at six hundred. So, you income all that to, including the firework here, the animal store here, and those aren't your, you get it.
So, I, I do have a question about your budget here.
Sure.
You've got, um, it looks like at the end of fiscal, uh, halfway through fiscal year, you had, uh, uh, ninety four point seven percent of your professional services, which obviously doesn't allow you enough to finish the year out. But, uh, but you did not adjust that, um, moving forward, that's what is the same as it was last year.
That's correct, that is directly proportional to my billings. So, we have expenses where I have contractual labor downstairs, so I bring them in at one rate, build them out at another, and when that comes in, I move it to professional services.
Okay.
Um, and I wanna keep that above board, I don't want it to look like it's costing less business to, to do the job that your team that you pay to do. I want it to look like that, so when you see it down there, it's not coming in, I'm not gonna use it.
And, and when you look at your supplies, look at supplies and materials for four twenty eight, you'll see what was budgeted July first and what it was adjusted to by just over six months. That's because at Gary's request, when we do a state budget revision, for example, we just did a big one um, last month, which was over a hundred thousand dollars of revenue that, that he had collected or services provided. Um, I have that council put it in supplies and materials, and then he does like we did this morning through internal budget revisions, where we move the money, council approves, move the money amongst the, the different operating accounts, and it's easier for us to keep track of it that way.
Where it's moved out. Yeah, when you look at me as the director of that office, for you, or your team here, I, I don't want you to think I'm spending more than that thirty billion. You have us staff very well, but if I can stay under that and augment what the services worth, it's really good for us. We can speak to it from the county's standpoint.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Wine, moving on to Central Garage.
So, the Central Garage, uh, pretty much trying to keep it the same, except in, uh, contractual with professional services. You just awarded, um, thirty vehicles, we have two sitting, and I'm in possession of the better part of three quarters of a million dollars worth of radio equipment downstairs, it has to go in thirty new ones and forty two other ones as well as other vehicles. So, instead of asking for staff, I like to continue to do that work contractually, so I can stand and speak to statistically whether it makes sense to increase the fleet service staff or get through this heavy season and move on, so. That's the purpose or the reason you see that increase that much. I figured probably about two full-time people for the next year, we'll see, if you do it contractually, if I get it done in six months, we move on, and so. That's the purpose for the increase, everything else on the fleet side is working well. Um, Transit Authority continues to support us, I'm excited for them to get down there, we're moving that fifteen vehicles on the way, just to get down there, get it done. Um, that owner here who is the fleet specialist works really hard in times right now where it's tough for law enforcement. We've got two all-weather barge runners down, and they're fleet short, uh, on there right now, they've got a taillight out, seven fifty ball on the street, putting a hole in the bottom of the ground and watering, putting steel around the factory in the leg, and it's leaking. Uh, we called the bosses and we said, yeah, gee, in three weeks, can't do that right now, so. We work really hard, and Matt does a good job, he's a one on paper, I heard. It's, we, we probably moved Matt logistically about six times a day, but he's like, okay, I'm here, I'm stuck, I need another part to get something else, so. It's pushing the limits, but we're still being effective, but back support budget, you know, you increase new parts, and we expect decreasing in, in costs. It doesn't really pan out, it seems like the parts for the new ones cost more than the parts for the old, it's kind of teetering, you know, I watch it close, and I think, ah, we should be a lesson to learn, but we're trying to buy front wheel hook for twenty eighteen compared to what you're paying. All of the, compared to what you're paying for a front wheel drive, it's half the price, so those things are expensive in that end. If you remember when we started talking about S U Bs, this bitch said, you know, they're gonna be more expensive to support, it's time we're doing it, and they have proven to be that.
Well, the nice thing about the, the Transit Authority's new location is they can drop the vehicle off and go off back.
That's correct, buying one of the scoot, he'll make it. In the, the, the process we discussed, and just so you know, when, when you went down the road of creating your central garage and assigning staff to it, one of the, one of the defenders of that process was that the person taking the time to do this wasn't a uniform officer, but was losing productivity. You know, just to bring the parts in the parking lot, when you see a car there, that's a car we've not touched and is waiting for us, so. Eventful, that's what we're faced with, if it's empty, we've got to dial it out, it's no service, so. All of the labor and efforts that we see here free up that labor and efforts for a uniform officer to do their job, or an engineer, or.
That's another thing we were trying to say, back when we started going to Central Garage, you know, it used to be you had deputies sitting there waiting for the cars to service all day long.
That's correct, you not have that now, so, you, you have at least two thousand and eighty hours guaranteed uh, to do the statistics on where we, I said, we're helping and doing stuff, and it's typically, you know, a level one tech that will go and get, you're probably another five hundred hours there, so you're at twenty five, twenty six hundred hours right out of that that you gave back to the uniforms to be able to do it when you're doing it. So, that model is absolutely.
The other thing to point out is, the line share preventative maintenance is done by E P D A. However, for some of the more technical work that they can't do, um, early on in the process in two thousand and eighteen, Central Garage staff went around to all of the, the local garages and said, okay, how much do you charge for transmission replacement? How much do you charge for this? So that, um, they have an ongoing list of, you know, who, who's gonna give us the best labor rates for, um, for what we do, and, and sometimes they'll even allow us to buy the parts.
All times, it's not an option.
Um, and then we take it to them and say, well, here are the parts that's needed for the, for the repairs, so that the anything we're paying for is, is like.
Yeah, that, that is our relationship with everyone, that there's no parts provided. When they're rare, there are occasional ones that are rare, that they may have some, like, hey, that's fine, but ninety eight percent of the time, we're buying parts at the government rate. And that's a really great, by the way, you'd wish you could buy your truck parts at that rate, so. Uh, in delivering them, they deliver, the parts drops them off at our location, we tell them to do it, and they install it, so. You're seeing invoices from service providers, to include Transit Authority, that is one hundred percent.
That includes tariffs?
Bulk oil.
Right.
Well, we're running, we're running a synthetic blend bulk bought at a dollar thirty five a quart, where it retails three seventy five, three fifty, so. So, the model continues to work, even though we have a new administration at the sheriff's department, we keep our ear to the ground and hear the damage, to make sure that they're satisfied with what we're doing. Always room for change, as a matter of fact, the new administration wasn't in long. Always room for change, as a matter of fact, the new administration wasn't alone, and they said, hey, can we talk to you about this? We do our very best to to be able to accommodate, and they're feeling it, actually, they're tight on vehicles, and they have them broken, they want to make sure we understand if the pressure's on them, get it. The pressure's on us every time, so we're a service company, so they say, help, it's not like we'll get to that. And to kind of speak to what Alan said, the vendors that we're dealing with, they have to understand that too. You know, if I drop my personal car off at a shop, that's awful, I drive my mother and wife's car, but we drop a cruiser off, particularly in our environment right now, we don't have to. But they can't fix it fast or can't give us some other go, or it hurts, and some shops do don't like that, don't want to see it. We get that once a month or so, I can't drop my my good customer. We understand that completely, just want to know, I'm trying to think we're special, but we're ridiculous.
I've been on the other side of those services with Matt, and it works very well. And, you know, I'm I'm not standing at the garage for an hour, hour and a half waiting for, for being able to be serviced, I can be in the office of doing whatever I need to have gotten done. And it is definitely, I think it works very well.
And we've got, the the fireboard accrued a fat hundred thousand dollars effort with my team, a good proportion of that is fleet. They do mobile data computers and all their fire trucks, we've already done it in ambulances, so we'll be hauling around, don't want to do any cruisers and fire trucks. Part of that increase in professional services will be the money coming in the year and going back out there.
And we talked about the escalating expenses, particularly on the IT side, but, you know, keep in mind, and I'll use eight oh two in the brown stripe, when we added the new seventy-two hundred square foot addition communication center, all the cabling that's in the floor, and we have pictures of the cable in the floor, was done, was done in-house.
Every building.
All the new cabling in five twenty South Broadway Street is all being done.
All bought in-house, now the contractor over there is pulling it, but we're, I've had two people in there for the past two weeks, and we're probably another full week from completion. That model is, you have grown, and I know you know it, I don't, I'm not trying to be the bad horse, but when as you grow and these things come on board, following right behind it, all right, okay, how do we get it done and how do we keep it there for?
And that's how we can keep our building and do our building projects when other counties can't do it, that has larger budgets. Their their buildings don't even come close to ours, right? And I if I was to take a guess right now, that, you know, your team's pulled enough cable since two thousand and ten to probably stretch from here to the other side of the northern part of Baltimore.
Oh, we're just in, just in the number one center, we're almost a hundred and ten thousand feet, just there.
Right.
The five twenty, we delivered fifty-six, so there was fifty-six thousand over there, and we've gone out that way. It's huge, and to that statement, when we advertise and put these parts down, I got several calls from the bidders that said, you guys understand how this stuff you're buying is the next generation, most, most, one of them aren't, they just want to plug a turn on the line, no, no, we want that. Here's how a lot of it is, you've all driven, hey, appreciate this, you have a driven gun eighty-one, there was an accident, there were fire trucks and police cars, you go like this because you can't see, it's it's ridiculous. This new technology, we will program these thirty-two cruisers, when they pull up and they arrive on scene, they'll know based on GPS that they're together, and they'll all of a sudden send their lights together, one steady pattern. That's just some of the luxuries that really don't understand that happens, both for the, both for the responder, one of the other ones is.
Well, and all those lights going, what you said, are very, makes it very hazardous for the first responders. Because you can't see if the people's twenty feet from them.
That's right, one of the, one of the, and I just, I just test program one the other night. One of the really neat features, since we're talking to the car, if an officer gets out, have you seen the canines, they have a door, but the officer can let that dog out. So that dog comes out, it jumps out into the middle of this room, now we can, on the activation, we open that door, we can make all those lights, they can turn white and light it up, like the whole area, just like a spotlight. So there's lots of things that help responders, that help the citizens, that help everybody, so unfortunately, technology's everywhere. It isn't cheap, this isn't, but I believe we do it very efficiently and effectively.
Got a question for you on your, your revenue generating side on the IT, I'm sorry, I'm bouncing all the way back there. But as you talked, I was looking through it, I know we've done a tremendous amount of work for the city of Martinsburg, don't see any plan on you for that.
We haven't done anything in the current.
Year?
No.
Okay, so you, okay, so we didn't, we didn't terminate?
We've never done it, but the big chunk of that that was approved is still laying, that contract's still good, they basically towed it in the new building, it's just not holding, so that's why it's.
Oh, okay, they're not in it yet, I thought they were.
No, they're in the building, we just haven't done the technical work, that's relative to Canada, that they haven't done yet.
Okay. Any questions on the Central Garage?
If that's more for fires or fire.
Sure.
Yeah, I feel that.
That is reflected.
And we in kind, and that's another in kind, there's an in kind to a completely different agency.
Right.
We in kind telephone and internet, we provide that bandwidth now, so it's a great relationship.
And we even offered it to the school board for Back Creek Valley.
And today, you know, I talk about this, understand that when 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 we talk about in kind, very cognizant of whether or not it increases the bottom line for you some year. It has not, it will not, and the day it does, I'll stand here and say, okay, because of this, we've driven this expense, how do you want to handle it? So we're not in a situation where you're giving anything away, phones, internet, stuff like that, that raised costs, sales. Just to give you an idea, we take, we just did, we're going to bunch of work for the effort, as you can tell by the way, we've probably assumed that a part of maybe ten phone lines from there, that costs us, they're called DIDs, those cost us about five dollars per month of building the next hour or so, I'm trying to look up for those, but none, and that's probably the largest. But we haven't really gotten any relationship that where there's been any increase in expense, the tax, the in kind.
Sewer districts are big customers.
Very big customers, so we're doing a very big GIS project for them on the the school water side and the sewer district side. I have three full-time people.
The, the, well, there's two, two, two things real quick, and I spoke to you, we'll find, one, one of the things, the merging of the sewer and the water bill, you was very much involved in that. That was, that was pretty good, went, went fairly smooth, had a few hiccups that you, they had to work out.
It's with the new campus.
Right, just, just like anything else. One of the things we've talked about, and we redo the done building, is is doing the same with the fire ambulance, I guess that shouldn't be a problem.
We can make it happen. We're in a, we're in a contract right now with the ambulance, we're rewriting their building software, and they'll be, it'll be developed by us, so we did that thing finally about three years ago. So if either board came, let's just say, we need to make this a uniform, hook the field on the way out and back in, absolutely can.
Okay.
You said something a minute ago about we we offered, did we not do that, I thought we, for the school, the Back Creek Valley?
Oh, it wasn't, it was a little bit different after, after I said it, and basically, we thought that the Back Creek Valley School was underserved on internet service for the school. And you're in direct line site of the central dispatcher's tower on the ground top. So we met with them, we spent, Gary offered services with the approval of me setting there, be able to get them hooked up, but actually, actually come to find out, they weren't, it wasn't, I think, Mr. Wine, it wasn't the school, it was the community that went up and they get help.
And and as you will know, and Dan has the invitation, we're working right now, starting the review of your, your broad man, being looking in for a feasibility study, so that, well, that's, that's why you're going through activation. Fifty-six thousand dollars or something like that to pay for it, so the council approved it, the, the, we developed a, maybe two hundred and something million dollars is laying there.
Right.
That's what it's for.
Right. All right, any questions for Mr. Wine? All right, thank you, Mr. Wine. Ms. Malk, County Clerk, good to see you.
Good to see you, buddy, thank you very much.
You're here to make your presentation on two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two budgets?
Yes, sir, and I'm going to start with section four oh two of the account number.
Okay.
Basically, from last year to this year, not much has changed, except line two twenty-three, excuse me, yeah, two twenty-three, which is professional services, which has to do with payroll. We had to increase that to forty-two thousand, so we're, we're at least able to.
That goes to, of course, to my pay, which we outsourced payroll, but it has taken us probably two or three years to really get our financial records in order, and it's a good thing that we did, only because we're now migrating all of the financial records from the MS four hundred platform to the new power technology platform. So we work closely with Chuck Young, Chuck or Cox Holiday Young, on all of our financials, and he certainly, he is intimately familiar with our financials. He does our financial, preliminary financial statements for the auditor, so that's, that's money well, well spent.
Well, and and years ago, years and years ago, when we first got here, we actually subbed that out to another person.
We did.
At, yeah, and 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 so it's basically, it's similar to what we've been, but that's going from thirty thousand to seventy-two thousand.
Yeah, and that, in fact, if you look at your, if you look at your account now, it's currently budgeted thirty, but through the first six months of the year, it's actually, it's at a deficit balance of six thousand dollars. So Mrs. Malk and I will be working over the next couple of months, I I think there's some, some, some money in the operating budget we can go over to cap to to cover that, but that that line item was certainly under budgeted for the current fiscal year.
I think, I think what you were trying to say earlier was that, you know, with the audits that that is required, and with the style audit that's being done, for our finance department, Mrs. Malk's department, that has done a wonderful job. It's, it's, we're, and all the standards are better than others ever that we are.
Plus the fact, Mr. President, that Gary, they work on the finance programs, that we'll be so much, so much more in the twenty-first century with everything coming in and starting our records. So I'm real pleased, because what they're telling me, it's going to make almost push buttons, you know, everything.
Well, people like you and I need that.
Yes, because I always tell people, electronic challenge. But the other thing is, what I found fascinating is we had an opening, and we put out a, a request to, to hire, and as of like Monday, we had eighty applicants. I don't have what we have now, I'm going to not take those in hopes till seventeen, so it's going to be, it's going to be a lot, a lot of quality.
I do finance department.
Yes, so that's, that's it. Under the county clerk elections, which is called our team, nothing has changed, except our, Mr. Wine, I'll be telling you in the near future, because this is the year with the census that we have to do, maybe district changes, but there's a demand because of growth, we're going to have to at least eight new poll, polls like you're saying. And all of this has to be taken care of and online by January second of twenty, twenty twenty-two because of the election and the primary. So there'll be, all of this is coming up, like I say sometimes, mid-March, or so, that we're going to be getting with you to to look at all of this. And last but not least, February twenty-third and twenty-fourth, around one o'clock, we'll be getting the current information to you. We have new voting machines that are being demonstrated down in the office, and this is critical, of course, then after that, we're going to have to find out if there's any grants available, and all this other stuff wants to make a decision to update.
And we was thinking that there should be, of all years, should be a lot of grant money out there.
Right, so, but I just wanted to make you aware of what's coming up with this, voter's registration is going to be very busy.
Right, and I know when it comes to redistricting, Mr. Wine's IT department has been, played a huge role in that.
Oh, it's phenomenal, it's phenomenal.
And and that's the plan still.
Right.
Because he's got all the mapping and everything in place.
Well, that's really key, and as I said, we've got to look at the number of of locations, and of course, under state code, they talk about how many people, whole places you can go in a certain district and all this other stuff. So because our subdivisions and things are growing so heavily, it's really putting stress on a lot of that, so we're really looking, looking hard at that. And by the way, in the county, at the county courthouse, under stress, we have these cases that have flats for the subdivisions, and we're getting two more of them in a four thousand piece to hold that, because we have, we have twenty, I think twenty-one we do have, so our subdivision space is really, really getting full.
And we'll talk about the gun building, not too long ago, we, I mean, did we have the plan for today, but we got a plan ten years out, at least.
Well, and and the, going the inventories and things that we're working on, trying to get ready for the move, the big issue is on the state level, is that so many items, everything original has to be kept. It doesn't matter if it's scanned or not, so that's, it's, for example, land books, as I was saying earlier, we thought we had six hundred, we're now up to eight hundred and nine, and those are those great big, very big books. And the issue with them is, even if we got the revolving walls that you put that stuff on, it's got to be on a very stable floor, plus the fact they're going to be heavy duty. Those books are just horrendous as far as weight, these books probably weigh three or five pounds, I mean, just huge. So there's a lot of things coming up in the near future that's going to have to be addressed over to to make the move with the gun building. And last but not least is four twenty-one, is civil service, we're in the process of going over all of the records and making sure everything is current, and trying to make sure, of course, I don't know, I don't have the sheriff yet, I have met with one of the judges at civil service.